I believe we have, um...
Hey, Dr. Boyd.
Before we start, if we could stand for a moment of silence? Thank you. And next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Center School students coming up. I'll turn this over to Dr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce two Center School students who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. One is Declan Smith. He is a fifth grader at, in Mrs. England's class at Center School. He is the son of Holly and Mark Smith. And Declan has a big sister, Siobhan, who is in the seventh grade at Higgins. Declan loves to build with Legos. He also has his black belt in taekwondo, so be nice to him. He also plays basketball and just became a member of the Center School Cyclones basketball team. Congratulations. Declan's favorite subject in school is math, and he hopes to become a car mechanic and own his own repair shop when he grows up. And you'll let me know where you open so that I can use you. And remember, be nice to me. Sadie Hockman is a fifth grader in Mr. Blau's class at Center School, and she is the daughter of Jackie Hockman and school committee member Jared Hockman. She has a younger sister, Laney, who is in the third grade, and an older sister, Emily, who is in the 10th. Sadie likes to draw. She loves to play sports, including baseball, basketball, and soccer. She just became a member of the Center School Cyclones basketball team. Sadie hopes to become one of the first female baseball players in Major League Baseball when she grows up, and she wants to play for the Red Sox. Very good. My man. Let me just ask you guys a question. Who's your favorite superintendent? Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, well, they're not up yet.
But they will be.
They will. If you guys would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You too.
Congratulations.
All right, so next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve November 14, 2017, regular school committee minutes. Second. Motion made by Mr. Rosengold, second by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
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 Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Next up is approval of bills.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A number 3644 dated November 28, 2017, in the amount of $22,172.14, subject to audit.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Carpenter, warrant A number 3644, in the amount of $22,172.14. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B number 3645 dated November 28, 2017, in the amount of $742,874.47, subject to audit.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Carpenter for warrant B number 3645, in the amount of $742,874.47, seconded by Mr. Rosengold. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Olympia?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a warrant that wasn't included in the packet. It was emailed, I believe, to everyone. So I'm going to make that motion, motion to approve warrant C number 3646 dated November 28, 2017, in the amount of $46,410.98. And since it was not in the packet, it is for Hewlett-Packard Chromebooks.
Motion made by Ms. Carpenter on warrant C, number 3646, in the amount of $46,410.98, seconded by...
Second. Put on the motion. I believe the warrant actually is 3653, just for clarification.
3653?
Oh, yeah, so it's different, yeah. Amended 3653.
And just for the record, no objection.
No objection. Okay. Roll call, vote, please. Thank you.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Olympia?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
I wonder if we could go out of order here. There's no objection. We can move to the backpack initiative.
No objection.
Mr. Hockman? Thank you.
Okay. The backpack initiative is a joint effort by a number of people to help students who may need just a little extra help, particularly on weekends. And I'll let, I'll turn this over to Mr. Hockman, who originated the idea with some other folks, and we've been working together to get this done. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Dr. Levine. This idea, which I'll explain in detail, a little more detail, and I actually have some information I can distribute, if I can get a motion.
Motion received.
Second.
Was brought to me by Michelle Feld, who's here with us tonight. This is a program that is, that I believe she learned about while in Florida, and the program is designed to provide students who go hungry, go hungry every day with food on weekends. So it's a backpack initiative because what we hope to do with the approval of this committee is to literally fill backpacks with enough food for a student to have nourishment over the course of a weekend. And these are students who are identified by administrators within a building, like principals or school adjustment counselors or teachers. And they're primarily students who receive free lunch while at school. There's no such free lunch on weekends, and some of these students don't have the ability to get to a food pantry like Haven from Hunger or something like that because they don't have the resources to even get across town or get to a food pantry. So what this initiative would be, what we'd look, I'd look to do here is to pilot this program in two elementary schools with the ultimate goal of having the program implemented in all eight elementary schools at some point, and perhaps even the Higgins. The high school is less of a concern for me because Haven from Hunger actually has an outlet within the health center that's at the high school, and students have the ability to come and go as they need to obtain food. This will be a program that will be entirely privately funded. There's regulations here, or regulations within the federal school lunch program that prohibit use of federal funds for a program like this, since it's food that is being provided to students off-site. While working with Michelle and a whole host of other people, including Cory Jackson at In Transition and Haven from Hunger, with the Lions Club, with the Rotary Club, with the PBD Education Foundation, we've already gotten a tremendous amount of support. We've gotten donations that are waiting for the approval of this committee. Those donations, it looks like, will be used exclusively for the purchase of food. Initially, we had asked for some money for backpacks. We, through Ms. Mertag and her leadership team meetings with the principals at the elementary schools, we've identified 120 kids between the Welch and Center School alone who are in need of this service. That blew me away. When I started talking to Ms. Feld about this, I anticipated about half of that. So when I heard 120 kids between the Welch and the Center Schools, it took this thought and set me back because I didn't know where we were going to come up with money for backpacks, let alone food for 120 kids each weekend. Through the generosity of In Transition, we were able to secure approximately 60 backpacks that had been donated to them through their initiative at the beginning of each school year. They have a fund drive for school supplies and things like that. There was a surplus of about 60 backpacks that were sitting in a closet, and Cory Jackson was kind enough to donate those. Once we got those, I kind of had the thought that I don't want to spend money on backpacks if we don't need to. And recently, we've started a campaign for gently-used backpacks. And we've asked for people, parents, to donate gently-used backpacks so that we can save money for the purchasing of backpacks and use it for food. The way in which I envision, first of all, money to flow, at least during the pilot, which is what I'm asking for tonight, is through the school department. We have spoken with Mr. Stanton, who was able to set up an independent line within our, his, I guess, our budget, and receive funds. We've already received a commitment from the PBD Lions Club in the amount of $1,000, from the PBD Education Foundation in the amount of $360, from Grayvoc in the amount of $360. I'm expecting to receive approval from the Rotary Club Thursday in an amount that I don't know yet. I've had private citizens who've heard me talk about this at various meetings that I've pitched this project to for funding, ask if they can donate private funds. The Felds, who, Dennis is here as well, have generously offered to donate as well, even more than they have. The backpacks themselves will be filled with food by, again, a team of people that Ms. Michelle and I have gathered together, who are willing to donate the time to fill the backpacks. I envision that the backpacks would be delivered to the Welch and Center Schools on Fridays. And again, the Felds, through their Evans Flower business, have offered to transport the backpacks in their company vehicles to the Welch and the Center Schools. For the backpacks to be returned by the students on a Monday, we hope. And then transportation, again, provided by the Felds to pick up the backpacks. And then we go through the cycle again and gather the team to fill the backpacks and get them delivered to schools on Fridays. I'm hoping, because of the large number of students that we really do need the service, that we can get donations from area supermarkets and bigger box stores like Costco and BJ's and Walmart. I haven't gone to that, through that initiative yet because I want to get approval from this body before I do that. I have handed out some material that provides information for this. We're not looking for any money from the school department at all. I don't envision that we would ever look at funding from the school department for this program. Haven from Hunger and Cory Jackson has committed to provide us with food as well. They've already donated enough canned tuna fish, canned chicken, and applesauce for every student in the initial pilot of 120 for the first week. And they've committed to provide us with food on a weekly basis. So what I'm asking for, and I'll entertain any questions and happy to answer them, is for approval for a pilot program to initiate a backpack food program, and that pilot program to run at the Center and Welch schools for approximately 120 students. To begin, this Friday, we will have the ability to fill backpacks and have them distributed this Friday, and I would say run it through the school year. But rather than say that, I'd say till our last meeting in February, because after that, I'm hoping to have enough resources to service all eight elementary schools. I want to be able to expand it by the end of February. So I'll move, I'll make that motion for that pilot program to implement this program effective this Friday.
Second.
Motion made, motion made by Mr. Hockman on a backpack initiative, seconded by Ms. Dunn on the motion. Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair. Mr. Hockman, this is a great program, a great idea, wonderful service to the community. How would a private citizen, if they wanted to donate, like, where would they mail a check to? Who would they make the check out to? How would we go about that?
Through the chair, Mr. Olympia, thank you for asking. At this point, I would, I would say to, if they choose to mail it, funds in, to mail it to 27 Lowell Street, to the school administration building. Attention, Jared Stanton, our business manager, and make payable to the...
PBD Public Schools.
PBD Public Schools. I envision, after the piloting is completed, that we establish a foundation, take the funding away from the school, the work regarding the funding away from Mr. Stanton. He's generously donating his time in order to create this, this extra line and whatever work is going to follow from that.
So they should make a memo on the check, obviously, what it's for?
Yes.
Because I envision you might get some checks and say, hey, what's this for?
Yeah, I should say backpack initiative.
Okay.
Or if it doesn't, if there's nothing in the memo, we'll assume it's for the backpack initiative. For all funds that come into...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosengold?
Jared, I think this is a great initiative, and I applaud you for your effort. So, thank you very much for this. I just have a couple of questions. First one will be actually through the chair to Mr. Stanton. Is the account that's going to be set up, is that going to be your revolving account?
Through the chair, yeah. I might put it in the district-wide gift account, and we can easily track that.
Okay. I was just going to say, perfect. Second, I guess, through the chair to either Ms. Mertag or to Dr. Levine. How will students be identified? Will it be only through free and reduced lunch, or will there be other alternative methods as well? I just know through past experience, there are a lot of students that don't like the stigma of free and reduced lunch, so there are kids in our district that would benefit from this program that may not even be on that type of list.
Thank you for that question. But we know, the principals know, the teachers know, the guidance counselors know, the Saks know. We get recommendations from religious folks in town who tell us of families in need. So even if families don't self-identify, and you're absolutely right, some hesitate to do so, we know.
On that same line of questioning, how will they, how will they maintain their privacy as far as the backpack initiative goes? To whoever wants to answer that.
Through, through the chair. The backpacks that are going to be utilized for this program are nondescript. You wouldn't be able to distinguish it from any other backpack. They're, they're not the same backpack. They're not the same color. There's a variety of colors and designs. You wouldn't, walking into a room, seeing 30 backpacks in front of desks, you wouldn't be able to identify which were backpacks with books and supplies or with food. You wouldn't be able to distinguish. We were careful for that.
Two more questions, or actually, one more question and then a comment. How will you identify students with allergies, or allergic, food allergies?
Through the chair, again. Actually, one of the items that Mr. Jackson was looking to donate was peanut butter. There's a lot of surplus of peanut butter at the Haven from Hunger, and I was reluctant to take it because of food allergies. I've already brought on Kristy DiLoreto, who's the chairperson of AAI. And she's assisting us with identifying foods that wouldn't impact people with allergies. I've also talked to principals of the two schools about particularly the peanut butter, because if there's a non-allergy issue, peanut butter is a staple for protein and fat and a lot of nutrients that a young person would need. And if we can get, you know, those items that maybe cause issues for people with allergies to families that don't have allergies, we'd like to. Because like I said, it's inexpensive and there's an abundance of it already to go off the shelves. So we're working with the principals, we're working with AAI and people like that to minimize any impact on it.
Through the chair. Nurses become a very important part of that discussion as well at each school.
And just lastly, I have two backpacks at home collecting dust, so just let me know where I can drop them off.
My porch. 52 Ellsworth Road, drop them on my porch.
Sounds good.
Please. And by the way, and thank you for the kind words, the credit for this goes to Michelle Feld. I've really just kind of run with her idea. She's come up with the idea. She presented it to me. It's a wonderful idea, and all the credit goes to her.
And she's here tonight, so... You'll have backpacks on your porch tomorrow.
And anyone else that wants to drop them off, please.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Hockman. This is wonderful. I'm really glad that you brought this forward, and thank you to the Felds for supporting it and all the people that are involved with this. It's really sad, when you think about it, that we even need to think about this, but it is so necessary. As you mentioned, at the high school, they've had a very successful program where they are sending food home over the weekends with students who need to bring food back because once school is closed, there are many, many people who no longer will eat all weekend until they come back to school on Monday morning. And that program up there has been very beneficial to numerous students and their families. This is going to help so many more people, and it would be great to have it expand to all eight elementary schools and then possibly to the Higgins eventually. It's amazing how generous people are and how many people look for something to contribute to. And I think that they'll be very, very happy to give to this because the high school program was pleasantly surprised with the number of people that came forward after they talked about their program when they did their presentation last year about what the health clinic was doing on all different avenues. And they were telling me how people who watched it actually got in touch with them to contribute. So people really do want to help others, and that, that's going to be a huge benefit to this district. So thank you again. I think it's wonderful.
Great, thank you. So there was a motion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So through the chair, I was wondering, I also have an old washing machine. Can I drop that off on your porch?
No, but you can sell it for scrap and give me the money.
All right, at this point, we have a presentation by Erin Thorpe from the Brown School Playground Proposal.
Come on up, Erin. Why don't you sit in my seat? Don't get used to it, though.
Nice to see you, Erin.
Nice to see you. Thank you. Bear with me, I'm not, I'm not a fan of public speaking. So at the Brown School, I have sorted a playground committee. Our vision with the playground committee is to rebuild our existing playground and for our new playground to be a place where all of our students with disabilities will be able to navigate independently. Inclusion between peers can happen effortlessly, and every child can be enriched in the process of accessing it. So what our idea is, is to create a new, all-inclusive playground. We have a high population of students with special needs at our school right now, and inclusion is really an important piece of our school. Children with disabilities benefit from opportunities and enjoy active play, including social skills. And at the same time, children without disabilities learn valuable lessons about the world, including that everyone has similarities and differences, and they can develop concepts related to tolerance, diversity, and acceptance. Children with disabilities are typically excluded from play more often than their peers without disabilities. So children with disabilities are at higher risk for social isolation. Active play is just as important, perhaps more, for children with disabilities. Playgrounds are an ideal environment for supporting overall healthy development. So for children, play is really important. They solve, they learn to solve problems, make decisions, persevere, and interact with people and objects in their environment. So inclusive playgrounds are designed specifically to ensure that children with multiple abilities can play together, not just alongside of each other. So I'm here to propose, not only do we build an all-inclusive playground, but that we name the playground in memory of our friend, sorry, Randy Lemajia, who passed away this We would like to name it the Randy Lemajia Memorial Playground. Randy was a good friend of mine, passed away this August. She was hired as a special education teacher for one of our fourth-grade co-teaching classrooms at the Brown School. She was a very compassionate, talented teacher. And she wanted everybody to have a chance to be independent and explore life. She was the president of the ICE program at Westfield State University, which stood for the Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Initiative. She was in the, one of the first peer mentors at the program. The ICE program is a state-funded grant program that provides dual enrollment opportunities for high school students aged 18 to 21 that have intellectual and developmental disabilities in inclusive, in inclusive experience, college experience. I wanted to share a couple quotes that reflect who Randy was and how she felt about inclusion of individuals with disabilities. Inclusion is so important. Friendship is something that people with disabilities often miss out growing up. And creating opportunities for these students to devote, excuse me, and creating opportunities for these students to develop relationships is work we should all be doing. As a society, we continue to justify excluding people with disabilities. There is a clear us versus them binary in regards to people with disabilities. And people who are able-bodied, this allows for a vicious cycle of exclusion to continue. So why build a new inclusive playground now? Well, our population at the Brown School has changed drastically since it first opened in 2003. When it first opened in 2003, there were no special students or classrooms. Today, we have 89 special education students within our 11 special education classrooms. We have two substantially separate ASD classrooms, three substantially separate milestones classrooms, and six co-teachings or connections classrooms, one at each grade level. There is no all-inclusive playground in South PBD. There's only one in West PBD. And our students with disabilities need a variety of equipment to meet their diverse needs. They need sensory equipment for jumping and swinging and spinning and swaying and tactile exploration ramps so they can be more accessible, not, not only if they're in a wheelchair, but maybe they have motor planning issues. And the equipment should also be accessible to any student in the school, not just our students with disabilities, but all of our students so that they could play together in one area. That's why I think we need one. And my friend Jason here is going to show you what we're, why, what we have designed and why, what we're looking at for numbers and, yes.
I'll, well, first of all... Well, first of all, I knew Randy and she was a great person. And I'm just going to leave it at that for now. When you talked about there's no inclusionary playground in South Peabody, I happen to know one of the chairpeople from Adventures from Angels that got the Cy Tenny Ross Park One built. So if you have any questions as far as getting this moving, just let me know.
I would love that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Through the chair, may I recognize Jackie Ophanos, principal at the Brown School. Thank you for being here, Jackie. And Elaine Metropolis, who's the principal at the Brown, who has done such an incredible job at leading a building with so many challenges on a day-to-day basis. I was wondering if, did you want to say anything in support of this, Elaine?
Just that I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically support this with all my heart. I think this is something that will be beneficial not just for the students at the Brown School, but certainly students in our whole city, especially the south downtown area. We're very fortunate that we have people in our school, staff at our school, like Erin Thorpe and her staff members who are here, Sherry Raffan and Denise Lemengiea, who worked in Erin's classroom as paraprofessionals, who are just amazing at what they do. And I can't thank them enough for what they do every day for these students. We're also very, very fortunate to have Jason Corbett here. He is a parent at our school. He has two children at our school. He's also a member of the Brown School Improvement Council. And he's going to be presenting some things. His company, I'm not even named.
Play Power is the parent company and they sell Little Text commercial equipment.
So he is in this business, has knowledge of it. And also his company is the one who donated the body bench to our school. So which is, you know, I consider myself very fortunate to be involved in this, among the playground community. And just excited to be here and endorse and wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you, Ms. Metropolis.
Through the chair. What a wonderful project, what a wonderful tribute. I did not know Randy personally, but my four-year-old son did at the rec center in Peabody. And she touched his life dramatically. And it's just a wonderful tribute. Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You need a vote. So I'm going to make a motion that the school committee proceed to approve the plan of the Brown School to build an accessible playground on the grounds. So moved.
Could we have that seconded by the balance of the committee?
Absolutely.
Motion made by Ms. Dunn, seconded by the whole committee on the motion.
And I think you probably need that so that you can go forward with some of your funding as well.
Yes.
So we'll have that typed up for you. Okay. And also make a motion that it be named in honor of Randy Lemengiea.
Seconded by everybody.
Roll call vote, please. I think we can do it on.
You can put it in one motion.
Roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Mr. Rosigal?
Yes.
Mr. Lintio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I did have one question. Do you have a timeline of when you think you'll be able to build them?
We didn't set a timeline. Just when we get the money, we build.
So you need the money. Okay. All right.
What we'll do through the chair is to keep the school committee apprised of how things are going. Periodically, we'll give reports to the full committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, we were going to have a presentation on the civics initiative, but Mr. McHugh is not here, so it must have been his fault or Marjorie's fault because it couldn't have been mine. So there had to be a miscommunication. I take responsibility for that. We'll have that on the next agenda.
Okay, great. So there's no, why don't we stick with the superintendent's report and then we'll move back? That's okay?
Yeah, basically, there is no superintendent's report now. The monthly hiring status report is in your folder. The accountable unit report is in your folder. It's business as usual at this point. And with that, superintendent's report is done.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to Mr. Farrell on the hiring report. I see that there are two positions that are currently vacant. Are we posting those?
They have been posted and actually one has been posted on one floor.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. I did want to commend and thank Corey Jackson, who is the executive director of Citizens Inn. Corey is a wonderful human being. I'm just getting to know him a little bit better. I serve on the board of Citizens Inn, which has merged with Haven from Hunger, and I was on that board. And I just want to thank him for his generosity and willingness to step up at nearly, at any proposal to help people. Corey is the first one out of the gate. I also wanted to say again, and I've said it before, the city of Peabody is fortunate to have in its such wonderful, caring, giving, generous people who give of their time and their resources to people in need throughout the city for a whole variety of reasons. I'm proud to be at Peabody. I, thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Just while we're giving accolades to Corey Jackson, I'd be remiss if I didn't say when Corey gave us the backpacks, he also gave us four bins full of school supplies that I dropped off over at the Welch School a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Levine is absolutely right. The capacity that Mr. Jackson has for giving and compassion is unparalleled from anyone that I've met.
It'd be great if we could invite Mr. Jackson down here at some point at one of our meetings to basically tell what he does and what his group does. I think that'd be a great idea if we could probably do.
Yeah, I'll make that happen.
Great, sure. Thank you, Dr. Levine.
You're welcome.
All right, so if we can move back to continue business with Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Higgins School Building Committee met two weeks ago on our monthly scheduled meeting. And at that meeting, we determined that the silt sacks can be removed from the area on the road surrounding the new athletic fields. And that was pending notification from one of the engineers, so actually it should have been done by now. The grass has been treated for the winter. So all of the growth will be monitored as much as they possibly can. They shut down the irrigation system for the winter as well. All of these things are timed and are on warranty. So that's kind of an interesting part of the discussion about when things will actually be ready to use, when things will be turned over to the city and the school department. And those are all coming up over the next three seasons. The meeting, normal meeting for this month would be on the third Thursday of the month, but we may not have one this month. We are at the end of so many things that it might only be a half an hour meeting. So it may be held off until January for complete and total wrap-up. They did give us an update on the commissioning. The commissioning of the building is an ongoing process. So it is very lengthy. And the commissioning agent has come out quite often to check on how the, basically how the systems work in the school. What they look at are the heat, the heating system, electric, the water, the plumbing, all of the things that keep this building running. So they have a very stringent requirement on each of those. And again, it gets into the issue of warranties. If something isn't working, it stays on warranty until it does start to work. And then there's a certain time period, which is basically like a, you know, you use it, you make sure it's working, and then they finally will turn it over to us. So it's an ongoing project, but it is winding down.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And thank you for dedication and your hard work on that.
Oh, you're welcome.
On this.
It's a lot of fun, actually.
Thank you very much. At this point, public participation, if anyone would like to participate? All right, we can move on. Some written communications in there?
I think it's just a subcommittee report.
Oh, subcommittees, okay. So we'll start off with the education subcommittee?
We're hoping to schedule a meeting for December eleventh and we'll post it in the normal course.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee? Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. The finance subcommittee met this evening with AFSCME. It was our first meeting for negotiations and ground rules were set. We have another meeting coming up with Unit A, the teachers' union, for December fifth. That will be their first meeting. And I did just receive correspondence from Unit C, the Paris, to begin negotiations, so we will be reaching out to them with a date. And that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. School safety?
All right, nothing to report.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness?
Nothing to report at this time.
And quality standards, Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The quality and standard subcommittee met this evening prior to this full school committee meeting. And we had two items on our agenda. The first was the issue of the pay to ride and the concerns of some folks who wanted to participate but wanted to have the bus stop moved. At the meeting tonight, what we ended up discussing was, if you can hold on one second, the policies which are in your packet are there, you know, for your information. And these are the policies that have been in place for quite some time. As a matter of fact, on document number 127, there's actually a typo. It says on September 21st, 2004. It should be 2008. But that policy has been in place for, going on almost ten years now. And that is the policy that really came into play during our discussion. So one of the things that the parents were concerned about, and you all know it because they did speak at the public participation at a previous school committee meeting, but in preparation for tonight's subcommittee meeting, I brought forward information to the committee members, subcommittee members, some of the facts and figures that I was given when I spoke with Ms. Bresnahan, Eileen Bresnahan, the head of transportation. And presently, the reason that that policy has been in place as it is for so long is if, after all of the work that they do in the summer, creating the bus routes, determining where the appropriate bus stop should be, we open it up to people as a convenience to allow people, if we have room on a bus, and if they go to an established bus stop, then we are able to accommodate additional people to travel on our buses. Some buses are already at maximum, and if someone wants to ride on that bus, as the, you know, under the pay to ride, they're not allowed because we've already got an established bus that is full. We also require that people go to an established bus stop because all the timing of our buses is actually really precise. We have a three-tier bus system, and it's not recommended to deviate from that because it's such a tight schedule, getting students to one school and then getting the bus out on the next run and the next run. And it can really create a problem. And people think, oh, you know, the kids jump on and off the bus. They don't. There can be holdups along the way, but there can also be holdups at the bus stop. And again, these are really timed for maximum efficiency. The other bit of information I had asked Ms. Bresnahan, I said, how much money do we take in from the bus fees? And Mr. Stanton, correct me if I'm wrong. It's $1,388,000 this year to run our buses. We get in $290,323 from bus fees. That includes the pay to ride. So there's no extra money coming in on the buses. If we really wanted to, if everybody who says, oh, I pay a bus fee, I'm helping with the buses, yeah, you're helping with the buses, you really are. But if everybody had to pay what it would really cost to ride the bus, it'd be approximately $1,000 per student. It costs $58,000 per bus for the year. So the fact that we charge a bus fee is really just an offset. It does not cover the actual cost of a bus. We build into our budget a $325,000 offset to our budget line. We've never hit that. We don't bring that, we don't even bring in that amount of money. So again, the issue of the buses, you know, of the pay to ride kind of being, you know, extra money towards the buses, it really isn't. It, again, is a convenience. With our bus system, there were a hundred applications for the pay to ride program that had to be denied. Twenty-three were because there was no stop in the area. I believe it was seventeen there were no room on the bus, but I'm not sure of that number. If you have any of that information, feel free to jump in on that. And there were numerous inquiries made by telephone, where the people called to find out if they could apply for pay to ride. And when they were told no, they just didn't fill out an application. So if we opened this up, we honestly have no idea how far that could go, and it could create innumerable problems for the transportation department. One, having them try to redo bus routes at this time would be horrendous because if you change one bus route, it's just going to be the domino effect, changing them all. It's always been held firm that it is open to people if they meet the criteria, if there's room on the bus and if the people go to a bus stop. But changing the bus stop has never been allowed in all this time. So for those reasons, the subcommittee brought forward to you the policies which are currently in place and has, on vote, made a recommendation that the policies still stand and that they not be changed. So at this point, the school committee does not need to take any action unless someone wanted to. You could vote to change the policy, or you can just leave them the way they are. So I bring that to you as a full committee, for your decision. But our recommendation of the subcommittee was to leave it as it is.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Motion made by Ms. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Rosigal. So just to clarify, a yes vote keeps it as is?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman, excuse me?
Thank you. On the motion. We are in a service business. Our service is to provide students with an education. And that education, thankfully, this committee has agreed all the time I've been here, is all-encompassing. It includes athletics, it includes arts, it includes English, it includes math. We were going to talk tonight about a civics program that hopefully gets reintroduced at the high school. We've had a transportation policy that's been in place for a long time. And it sounds like with the number of people who are calling the transportation office, questioning whether or not they are eligible to ride or they want to ride, that it's, that service isn't working for the consumer. I understand that transportation is an expensive business. I understand that the user fee for riding the bus doesn't come close to covering the cost of transporting students. I'll speak specifically about the issue that was before the subcommittee tonight, and it dealt with some parents of students who live either in center field or practice circle, right along Lowell Street where a bus, several buses pass, and the students, I think, went to the high school. And I think Ms. Dunn was correct in, when I listened to the meeting, I arrived late, but that this could be a Pandora's box. And I don't think that this is the right time to necessarily amend the policy in the middle of the school year. I think our transportation department does a great job with the resources that they have. But I think it's time to maybe revisit the policy that we have. And maybe somehow send out a survey or send out some communication to folks to see who is willing or wants to ride the bus and whether or not we should change the distance guidelines that we elect to make. We want to get kids to school. We want to get kids to school safely. We want to get the kids to school on time. There are weather-related issues that are beyond everybody's control. Ms. Dunn correctly stated at her subcommittee meeting that we don't have a city ordinance requiring people to shovel. And I'm not suggesting that we should. I'd hope that people would be responsible to shovel their walkways. But I also understand that there are elderly and infirm. that there are elderly and infirm who don't have the ability to shovel snow, particularly when we get storm after storm after storm, and it makes it difficult for homeowners and residents. I understand that. So, what's the response to that? The response to that is, to me, if their parents can't drive them, put the kid on the bus and get him to school. We do, we violate our own policy, and we do it because the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires us to. So, for example, if we had a second grader that lives across the street from the West School, but they elect to go to St. John the Baptist, by law, even though they live within a mile or a half a mile, whatever the guideline is for elementary school, of their community elementary school, the law requires us to transport that child to St. John the Baptist all the way downtown. So, there already are instances, and then the same's true for Bishop Fenwick. If a child lives in Rolling Hills, but their family elects to send them to Bishop Fenwick because, for a variety of reasons, most of which I don't agree with, but for a variety of reasons, we are obligated to transport the kid that would otherwise walk to the high school under our guidelines and wouldn't be eligible for transportation, but we transport them across town up to Margin Street so that they can get an education at Bishop Fenwick. Look, I know that this is a policy that we have in, we've held fast on over a long period of time, and I think we should continue for this year because it's not the right time to make a change. But I'd like to, or I'd like to at least revisit the policy so that we can maybe amend it at some point to accommodate more people and simply just get these kids to school.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Rosengau?
Thank you. I don't disagree with revisiting the policy. In the middle of a school year is an impossibility. And what's going to end up happening, if you fast forward to budget time, what's, depending upon what that number is going to look like, then we're going to be looking at substantial decisions, whether you want to decrease the bus route from our current standards or lose a teacher and pick a class. So, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Hockman. I don't. That, I think maybe it is time with the amount of traffic that's never going down, it's only increasing. And specifically, specific areas in our school district being a little bit more of a challenge to get to school than others. But to implement anything in the middle of a school year, I think, does everybody a disservice because it just completely upsets the applicer.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Dunn, I actually had a question. We spoke of, how much is a bus? What did we say the amount of, to operate one bus was? Maybe?
Mr. Stanton can give you the exact number.
She was pretty smart on about $58,000.
Was it about $58,000? So, just for the public, $58,000 to run one bus?
Right.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right. Mr. Olympia?
And about $40,000 of that is coming out of our pocket. So, talking four or five buses, we could be talking a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, I believe there is a motion on the floor by Ms. Dunn. On the motion, or?
Actually, I do have a question. I mean, it is always good to revisit these things and to look into it. If we are going to look at, you know, if we are going to look at the distances and the money we charge for buses, that is something we probably should start looking at at the beginning of this, in a month. Just because we would, if we did make any changes, we would need to put them into the budget. And I can remember when these were set, it was a very lengthy discussion. A lot of information had to come forward. There were a lot of decisions that had to be made just to come up with the policy on bus distances. Aside from the pay to ride program, it was just the regular discussion on where to charge bus fees and how far to bus students. What many people don't realize is, PBD does bus students at a much better distance than that required by the state. And that is something that we tried to explain tonight to the folks who came to the Subcommittee meeting, but also just so the public understands that the state requires students to be bused if they live more than two years, I'm sorry, more than two miles from a school. And that can be, that has to be free of charge. And what PBD does, we bus kindergarten students who live from a half a mile to two miles from the school. From 1 through 5, we will bus students who live within, who live 1 to 2 miles from the school. Grade 6, 1 and 1/2 to 2 miles from the school, and 7 and 8, 1 and 1/2 miles from the school. We had, we had a lengthy discussion about that because of Higgins having the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. The way that the state looks at the requirements, they stop at grade 6. Technically, if the city decided to, if this board decided to, we could just say, we're not going to bus anyone from 7th and 8th grade unless they live 2 miles from the school or more. And we didn't. And made sure that we were trying as much as possible to help people and to transport students. And then at the high school, students grades 9 through 12 who live more than 2 miles from the school can be bused. And again, that was a decision based upon, you know, safety, cost, timing, everything. There is a lot of, a lot of moving pieces on a bus decision.
So, we go above and beyond with the state?
We do.
Regulates our mandates?
We do.
Dr. Levine?
Thank you, through the chair. Every time I listen to Mrs. Dunn talk, it reminds me of how important it is to have somebody on the board that has history, because you've been around for a lot of these discussions. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. It would probably be helpful to the school committee if we in central office over the next few weeks put together a review of contiguous and like communities and what their policies are and what they charge, including the mileage distances. And we shall do that for you and have that ready for, if not the next school committee meeting, the first one in January.
Thank you.
And there was something else I'd like to bring it forward to everyone, that when bus stops are determined by the Transportation Department, they, sometimes you may see a bus stop that's been there for 45 years. It's there because there's a determination made every year that that's the appropriate place for it. Some bus stops go away when there are no students that live within a certain distance to get to that bus stop. They're always determined to be a safe spot and a centrally located spot for a neighborhood or a group of students. And as the population moves in PBD, and it does change, those, some bus stops come and some bus stops go, but it is looked at every year. And again, that is part of the work that goes on through the summer. That's why it's so important for people to submit their request for a bus as soon as possible. This board even offered a discount to encourage people to put that paperwork in early because it's a lengthy process. And once it's set, to try to change that midstream, it really, it really would create a lot of problems for a lot of people. And it really isn't, it isn't feasible at this point because those decisions are made with the budget in mind as well. So, that was something that I got from the discussion with Mrs. Bresnahan as well.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Just on a couple of points. With the specific issue that's before us, or that was before the Subcommittee, it wouldn't have added any deviation from any buses. A stop could have been made on Lowell Street at the corner of Proctor Circle, and we could have had the kids from Center Field go to Proctor Circle. That's just a point on that, and I'll leave that alone. If we, if we wanted to minimize the services that we provide to students, we could serve liver and onions at lunch in every school. No kids would buy lunch, and we'd be able to do away with our lunch service staff. And we'd be able to save money and buy more teachers and do all other things because we're not providing the service that our consumers want. No kid's going to eat liver and onions for lunch, so we, why would we serve it?
Ms. Dunn?
I respectfully disagree. If we were to allow an additional stop, then we need to allow every requested additional stop. So, that's why we had to stay firm. I mean, policies are written in a vacuum. If you change policies with every request, you end up basically, why have the policy? This is a very good guideline. Sticking to it is fair, even though for some people it may seem unfair. What people need to recognize is, if you make an exception under this policy, then you have to make an exception every single time. And the reason that those numbers from Mrs. Bresnahan were so interesting is that we know that there would be possibly at least 100 people, or 100 students, or 100 situations where an additional stop would be needed for those people to take that bus, or an additional bus would need to be run. So, keeping all of that in mind, it does make a difference. If you make one exception, then you have to be fair to everyone and make every exception. It's a difficult thing to do, but that's why we are here. We have to make some difficult decisions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Okay, so on the motion, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosengau?
Yes.
Olympia?
Yes.
Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. We have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Also before the school, the Subcommittee, was a recommendation, came from Dr. Levine. This was, this was concerning, gosh, I'm sorry. This is concerning a policy in our athletic and student handbooks. Under the chemical health rule, under a first violation, and Dr. Levine, I'm going to have you explain it.
Thank you very much. First of all, it's important to distinguish between our policies and the MIAA. Our policies are more restrictive than the MIAA. Written into the athletic handbook some time ago, quite frankly, I didn't even know it existed until an issue came up around it, was a very smart wording of a policy that suggested that a student who committed a chemical health violation would not be able to serve that suspension. Sometimes it's four games, sometimes it's six, in a sport that he or she had never played before. There was a good reason for that. Up until that policy, some students had taken advantage of a violation that may have occurred, a suspension that they had to serve by joining a team that they really weren't interested in because it happened in the next season. And they actually created problems on that team. They were not good citizens. They really weren't interested in helping the team or the sport, and it didn't work very well. So, a policy was created that did not allow for exceptions. In this particular case, when we're dealing with kids, you know, my philosophy has always been that most kids, most of the time, will do the right thing because they want to, but they're kids, and sometimes they make mistakes. There are also gradations of chemical health violations. Some are just not as severe as others. I do think there should be an exception, and I called it the superintendent's exception because I wanted to take the responsibility or the pressure away from the high school principal and have the superintendent review past behavior, academics, attendance, et cetera, to determine whether or not, based upon a violation that we think might qualify for an exception, and some violations would not, that a student would be allowed to join a team upon request that he or she had not played far before. The guidelines are very specific. If that is allowed to happen under the superintendent's exception, the student must remain a good citizen in school and have no further violations of the student handbook, must remain a good citizen in the sport, and must finish the season, and must finish the season in good standing with a positive result, not necessarily athletically, but citizen-wise on the team. At the end of what we would call that probationary period where the suspension had been served and the season had been finished, the student would then have to get signatures from the coach, the athletic director, and the high school principal before I would sign off on that exemption being valid. If at any time, even after the suspension, let's say it was six games, was served, if at any time the student violated this agreement, all six games would be reinstated for the primary sport when the season came to fruition. So, but what I'm trying to do here is to give an opportunity for us to say to a kid who deserves it, you're getting a second chance. Now, there are some violations that just will not be considered because of the severity of the violation. But in a lot of cases, we look at something like this and we'd say, I wish there were a way that I could help you. The way it's written, I can't. So, I'm asking you to make an exception to this policy, the way that I've worded it, so that I can move forward with the opportunity to help kids who may not have committed the most severe violation and do, we think, based upon past record, deserves a chance to rectify it in a new sport.
Ms. Dunn, would you want to add?
The, this committee went through the policy language and came to, came to a decision to recommend that the recommendation of the superintendent be followed, and that the language in the student handbook also conform with the student athlete handbook. We need to make sure that those are complementary. But we did recommend that we follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Great. So, motion by Ms. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia on the motion. Mr. Hockman? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Carver.
No, that's all right. Let him go.
Thank you. So, through you to Dr. Levine. First of all, I think that this is a good policy that you drafted, and I plan on supporting it. I just have a couple of questions with regard to the chemical health policy as it exists now. Are you saying that there are, that there's been enforcement of this policy that hasn't rendered the result that was intended when the policy was created?
No. What I'm saying is that before the policy was created, it created a situation where students were circumventing the suspension by participating in a sport that they had no interest in, which created the need for the policy.
Yeah, I mean, the policy that we're amending.
Yes.
Right. So, students were circumventing the policy that we're amending so that the chemical health policy as it currently exists before this vote wasn't achieving the result that was intended when it was drafted?
That is correct.
Okay. And second question for you through the chair is, is this amendment that you're seeking to have us move on first reading tonight, but is this change in policy to take effect immediately?
I am asking for that, yes.
So, on the motion, I'm just going to make a few points, and I'm going to support the amendment because I think it's the right thing to do. Back when we at Nazim talked about homeschool kids participating in athletics and programs at the high school, there were several mentions of the chemical health policy that existed at the high school that homeschool kids weren't going to have to adhere to. Well, it seems like kids at the high school might not have been adhering to that policy either. And with regard to changing policies in the middle of the school year, I'm happy to support this policy because I think it's the right thing to do.
Ms. Carver?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine. I had a problem. I don't have the language in front of me that you proposed, so if you could bear with me for a minute. If there's a chemical health violation, and it's deemed that it's not that severe, you'd like to give a second chance, how would that work for, say, right now, today, the winter season started and this person's going to play basketball? And you want to, so they're just going to play, or can you just explain to me how that?
No, they still have to serve the suspension in the sport that they're going to go into.
Okay.
So, they would be, they would sign on, let's say it's track, they would sign on to the track team, they would serve their six-game suspension, and then move forward and have to finish the rest of the season as a citizen, a good citizen on that team, and a productive citizen. The way that it's written now, without, they wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the ability to make that exception in any case right now.
So, they're, they're still going to serve their suspension? So, they're still going to serve their suspension?
Correct.
Okay. So, in regards to the violations that you're thinking of, you said there are only certain ones. Can you give me an example of some of the things you're thinking of?
I hate to say this publicly, because I don't want 30 kids to go say that the superintendent said one is less severe than the other.
Okay, so that's all right. So, in that same regard, will they still lose, I think there's a policy where they can no longer be a captain. Will that change?
No, that will not change.
I'm going to yield for a minute. I know Mr. Rosinell has a question, and I'm going to try to look at it one more time.
Mr. Rosinell?
So, what are you really looking to change specifically?
The policy reads, the way it reads right now, is that, let's say that you're a baseball player, and your season is over. And in January, let's say in November, you commit some sort of a chemical health violation. You serve your suspension. And you have the opportunity to participate in winter track. But you've never participated in winter track before. Now, it may not be your primary sport, but you see that as a way to serve your suspension in that sport and not have your primary sport be impacted when baseball comes around. So, kids up to this point, in some cases, not all, in some cases, have chosen that option and then not been good citizens during that season. They've served their suspension. But then when it came time to contribute to the track team, they haven't been good citizens.
So, two questions on that front. Number one is, what if the student just decides to go out for track because they're a sophomore and they want to explore other options?
They can. It's this, the way the policy's written does not prevent them from participating in the sport. It prevents them, well, they can't, and I'll tell you why. It prevents them from serving their suspension in a sport that they've never participated in. So, if that's the case.
But you're limiting students to participate at that point?
That's, that's why, well, that's, we are. There's a balance here. And, you know, that doesn't really sit well with me, but there's a reason for it. The reason it was written is because kids were taking advantage of the policy and circumventing the policy, serving their suspension in a sport that they cared nothing about and really had no interest in. And then not been good citizens the rest of the way in that sport.
So, in this hypothetical world, I'm a football player, and I get into trouble right before the Thanksgiving game. I should be suspended that game. And then five other games going into my next quote-unquote "season."
Correct.
I decide to try out for track. I would serve five games then?
Correct.
With my one game?
Correct.
So, okay.
So, what I've asked for in this exception through the chair is a tight policy and tight procedure that gives a kid a second chance, if he or she deserves it, based upon past academics, past behavior, and past attendance.
I'm sorry, through the chair. That's where you're kind of losing me on the second chance. Because we're talking about limiting students and making them serve their suspension.
No, it's already limited. This is, this is opening up that, the policy's already there in place, that they cannot participate in a sport that they've never participated in before and serve that suspension. That policy's in place. What this does is give us an ability to make an exception to that policy and allow the student to participate. Remember, if you haven't served your suspension, you can't participate in a sport until you serve your suspension. Now, let's say the kid was too a sport athlete. It really doesn't apply. Let's say that your scenario, football. He serves his last game as a suspension. And he's also a winter track athlete. And he has been a winter track athlete in the past. He serves five games, five meets, and then it's done. And it's not impacted anymore. But if he's never been a track athlete, this is what this policy doesn't allow. We'd like to make, the ability to make an exception to the policy the way it's written.
So, how would you, I'm sorry, through the chair. So, with freshmen and sophomores, there are kids that change sports frequently, especially no-cut sports. Cut sports are kind of different. You either start when you're a freshman and you play all four years, or you don't play that sport and you go to non-cut sports. I mean, I can speak of two juniors that I know right now that are picking up gymnastics that have never played gymnastics before in their life. So, I understand your rationale. I understand your point. I just, if you...
They do do that, Tom. They freely go back and forth. However, if they commit a violation, a chemical health violation, they would be prevented from doing so.
Well, they'd be prevented from starting the season. They'd have their five-game suspension, six-game suspension.
No, they would not be allowed to serve that suspension in a sport they've never participated in.
I understand.
So, they essentially could not participate.
At all.
At all, until their suspension is served. That's an MIAA rule.
Right.
So, until their main sport came around again, unless they have participated previously in that sport. If they had been a gymnast, that's a different story. They could serve the suspension then. If they haven't been a gymnast, they have to wait for their primary sport to come around to serve that suspension. What we're asking for is, we know in high schools that there are differentiations in severity of offenses. There's a difference between, there's a difference, maybe the worst of the worst would be distributing drugs on school property. There are many iterations below that.
I understand that. I understand that.
What we would like to do is to be able to take those students who might commit an offense under chemical health, but have a wonderful history with us, deserve a second look, and give them that opportunity. They don't have that opportunity right now, under the way the policy's written. They would have that opportunity under a superintendent's exemption.
Mr. Olympia.
Yeah, through the chair. So, I mean, this is how I understand it. So, I'm a football player and I'm a baseball player. Okay, I get in trouble towards the end of the football season. Okay, let's say if my intentions weren't, you know, true. I say, hey, I'm suspended for six games. You know what? I don't want to miss six, six games of my baseball season. I'm going to miss six track meets or six basketball games or something to that effect. And you know what? I really don't care. I'm going to show up and give the coach a hard time. And that's what probably happened once or twice before in the past. They circumvented that rule. What I like about this new rule is, so the football player, you know, say gets in trouble, and he learns his lesson. He's suspended for the, say, six track meets when he signs up for track. But he has to walk the walk. He has to be, you know, go to practice, do all the things a good student athlete has to do. And then if that's, if the track coach says, yep, this particular student, you know, did all the right things, then I think he learned his lesson. If he was, if he didn't learn his lesson and he thought he was trying to fool somebody, that track coach doesn't sign off on this policy. Guess what? He's sitting out six games for baseball season.
That's exactly right.
Great, great point. So, the, so this new policy eliminates that loophole. It makes, it actually makes the student athlete more accountable.
So, it doesn't, I'm sorry. So, it doesn't really take away the loophole. It basically makes them accountable during that sport they decide to play. Thank you.
Mr. Hockman.
It also requires the student athlete to finish the season.
Right.
Instead of just serving the six meets, they get suspended.
Yeah. Not that I'm speaking from personal experience, but... I understood this too. I was a, I was a football and baseball player. I hated track.
Ms. Dunn.
He had made the motion.
So, there is a motion on the floor, second by someone at some, by Mr. Rosinell. By Mr. Olympia, I didn't even understand. Thank you, so we'll listen.
So, roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Mr. Rosinell?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you all. And through the chair, next week I'll be submitting a more complex policy change.
One question.
Written in a foreign language.
Ms. Carpenter.
Did you talk to Mr. Boer about this?
Mr. Boer and the high school principal.
And they're all in one?
Not necessarily.
Motion.
No, no. I would say that they understand the reasoning behind the policy and have a wait-see. It's a little bit easier because I've written it as a superintendent's exemption and included the high school principal, rather than make it a high school principal's exemption where he would be under the gun all the time. So, we're going to wait and see. And to be quite honest with you, the first kid that's given the exemption under the policy, if he or she doesn't live up to the expectations that we have, it will hurt everybody moving forward. So, we'll see what happens.
I'd like to make a motion to revisit this at the end of the school year.
Second.
Just on that, though, but if the student, this is what I love about the policy. If the student doesn't walk the walk, they're going to be right in the same spot they were under the old policy. They're going to be sitting out the baseballs, the first six games of the baseball season.
Great point. Let's get back to Ms. Carpenter, though. There is a motion on the floor. Let's take care of that first. So, Ms. Carpenter, you have a motion?
Yep.
Second by Ms. Rosinell on the motion.
That's fine.
It's a good idea.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosinell?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You're still on. Ladies, ladies on the city council on advice report.
Well, actually, I think that's all we have from the subcommittee for the subcommittee on quality and standards.
Oh, so now you're on.
Now, we're on parent advisory board. We, we had a parent advisory board meeting last night. We had Mr. Stanton join us and speak to the parents. They had many questions about the point of sale, different issues that parents were concerned about. And Mr. Stanton was able to explain to the parents about the fact that as of Friday, after Friday, there'll no longer be any checks accepted for payment. The reason for that was because checks were bouncing. And by the time that the system was able to catch up with a bounced check, the money had already been spent. And then the fees on top of it, it just got really, really messy. So, it was decided to no longer accept checks. Parents can send cash in if they want with this student, and it will be credited to their account. And they can also send in notes with the students concerning whether a student can have certain food or, you know, you know, cut them off after two cookies or whatever, whatever is important to those folks. And also, Mr. Stanton explained that he was going to look into, one of the issues parents have is with the fee, the online fee. And he was going to look into possibly next year being able to have a different process where there'd be a one-time fee, almost like, you know, setting up the account. Mr. Stanton, you want to explain more?
Through the chair. Hopefully, I can get that implemented a little sooner. I think that they do offer that. But parents probably saw this in their emails the last 24 hours. My school bucks is actually increasing their fee 50 cents from $1.99 to $2.49. They had not increased their fee in 16 years. And they have a detailed email to all parents. I got it in Reading. I know parents in Essex are getting it. PB parents are getting it. So, that's new news that really broke in the last 24 hours.
Mrs. Stanton, there's no fee if a child brings in money and gives it to the register or the cashier, and they can apply it to that. So, that might be a way to get away from the fee?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Dunn.
Okay. And we were also going to meet with the head of food services, but she was unable to attend that meeting. So, we will reschedule the meeting with her. The parent advisory board members had specific questions about the lunches and the food services itself. It was a great meeting. There were several other issues that were brought up. And one, which I would like the permission of this committee to refer to quality and standards, was, it came to our attention that there's a lot of gray area regarding playgrounds. And all of the schools, the PTOs have raised the money for playgrounds. They, you know, get the playground built. Some schools, the PTOs have had to maintain a maintenance fund. Some schools have had to maintain a mulch fund or a fund for the play surface. And we'd like to look at this to try to come up with a, with a across-the-board policy to delineate whose responsibility is, I'm sorry, whose responsibility it is for the playground. Because when you think about it, the PTOs work really hard to raise the money. The playground committees go out, they really work hard to raise that money. And then they're giving the school a huge benefit. It can cost up to $250,000 for one of these playgrounds. And at that point, I mean, we're all using the playground, whether you've got a kid in school or not. If you've got a child, you're using that playground. The rec department, they're using the playgrounds. At some point, we feel like they've, they've done their share. They really gave a huge benefit to the department. To keep them maintaining it, we need to draw some lines. So, I would like to ask that that issue be referred to the quality and standards subcommittee for work on a policy to deal with that. So moved.
Second.
On that motion, I've been on the board for a while. And I remember when this was brought up a long time ago, we had charts and maps of what was city property and what was school property. And any playground that was on school property had to be maintained by the PTOs. We're literally talking about the same area from basically Ms. Dunn and I, distance, could differentiate whether the playground actually sat on school property or city property. So, I think this is a fantastic idea that everybody's now falling under the same umbrella with the same benefits that can be provided. Because I thought it was always ridiculous that one playground would get all the bells and whistles because it was on city property, whereas another one would have nothing because it was on school property. It never made any sense to me.
I remember that discussion. I think there was 20 minutes devoted to where a trash barrel was placed and who had to empty it.
Ms. Dunn, because that was in the form of a motion, we'll take a roll call vote on that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Rosinell?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. There was one other issue. Parent advisory board meeting will be held December 18th at Bertucci's.
If I can add, Ms. Dunn, if I can add something that we talked about at the meeting in regards to, and I was going to bring this up during new business, but I can bring it up during our panel.
Yeah, jump in, because I know there was one other thing we were going to bring forward.
One item in regards to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
There are two days on the calendar that we don't provide breakfast or lunch, one day being the last day of school, which is understandable, last day of school. But that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I would really hope that we can look at this. When you think about the situation, a student goes home on a Tuesday, has dinner, comes in on a Wednesday morning. Elementary school gets out at 11:55. Some of those students go to an after-school program or go home. That's a long period of time for a student not to have a meal, whether it's breakfast or lunch. And I understand that we may not be able to do a hot meal, but maybe we can look into doing a bagged lunch or definitely a breakfast and a bagged lunch or a snack, or just something to take them home. And, you know, Mr. Hockman had a great presentation earlier about the backpack lunches. So, there is a need probably in all of our schools. So, if we could work with the superintendent's office and maybe food services somehow and come up, come up with something that we can, we have some time. It's still November. We have, up until next November. I hope we can, we can work on this. And I think it would be a really nice touch for next year.
And if I can add to that, one of the interesting things was, it isn't necessarily that, you know, that the cafeteria has to be open, but there's no time in that day for the breakfast or lunch program. So, we really do have students now who are with us all day that day, and there's no time for them to, to actually eat, even if they, even if their family sent a meal in with them. The kids don't have that time. So, it was a very good discussion about that. It made a lot of sense.
Dr. Levine, please.
Through the chair. I'm not certain that this is still the regulation. I'll have to check it out, but I do believe that DESE says, if you don't serve lunch, you don't get credit for a day, on a half-day. Yeah. So, I think that we, I think that not only is it a moral obligation to feed these kids, but I think that it's possible that there's a regulation at DESE that says that we don't get credit for a day if we don't serve lunch. I'll, I'll check that out.
Sure.
And also, too, is that going to be something to think about with negotiations, though?
Yeah.
Right.
Right, because there's a difference between a half-day and an early release.
Yes.
Yeah, and the credit. That's how it went before, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have to think about that.
Ms. Dunn, do you have anything else on?
Nope, that was it.
That was the last one.
That was the last one.
Next up is building and grounds, which is me. I think we should set up a meeting for January, so I'll, I'll do that for January. Next up, special ed.
Yes, our next meeting is December 5th, Tuesday, at 7 o'clock.
Great, thank you. And new business. Mr. Rosinell, please.
Thank you. In your packet, you have an excused absence tea policy that I would like to have for first reading. Currently, we have high school students that are able to get a, a excused absence if they're going to go on a college visit. Currently, we have no policy if a sibling is looking to attend a sibling's graduation from either college or a military academy, and I think that's a shame. It's, it's a life lesson for that specific student. So, I make a motion to adopt for first reading the excused absence, absentee policy that is currently in your packet.
Second.
Great motion made by Mr. Rosinell, second by Ms. Olympia on the motion.
Yeah, just quickly, just some thoughts. It's on first reading. I'd like, first of all, I like the policy. I think it's a good idea. If we can, it seems, it doesn't include graduating from graduate school. It says college or university. I think graduate school is in line with what your thought is, and there's nothing in the policy that talks about the student being responsible for the work that they're missing.
Through, through the chair. That, that's a given. That, that is in any excused absence. There's still, that's part of the handbook for each individual school. I mean, we can add that. I don't have a problem with it, but splitting hairs.
It might be, but I, I just prefer to put it in if we can.
Do we have a limit on how many days on that?
Yep, it's in there. It's only one day excused unless approved by the principal because, like, they're traveling.
Because of travel situations, okay.
Exactly. And that's on here.
And that would be a maximum of three.
Correct, correct.
So, okay. So, there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Rosinell, second by Ms. Olympia on the motion.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
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 All right.
Motion resumed?
Second. Good meeting.
Thank you.